Okay, thank you. Hello, everybody. Thanks for joining us today. It's Monday, May 11th, 2020. This is a special meeting called by the Marquette Township Board. We are zooming via teleconference, and it's just 2:01 now. So if we want to say the pledge, Randy's gonna put the flag up. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic of Georgia State. One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, Randy, you can do roll call when you're organized.
First Platoon, all present, count to four.
Sir.
Okay, trustee Larue.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Retary is here, and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff President is Manager Gerard, our Attorney Roger Zappa, Superintendent Public Works is listening, John Kengas, our Count and Lois Stonehouse is listening, and our Public Works Accounts Clerk Brenda Helgren's listening.
Thank you.
And Frank. And Frank is here.
All right, we do have a little bit of public in case somebody wants to say something. I'll give you a second. In case.
Randy's got his hand up.
Randy, go ahead. You're not public, but that's okay.
There is no public comment via email.
Thank you. All right, let's get moving then. We need approval of the agenda, and we'll do a roll call vote.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, trustee Marks.
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Larue.
Yes.
Trustee Iverson.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Clerk Retary is yes, and Supervisor Durant.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. And I'm not aware of any conflicts of interest. Today is going to be candidates for the position of Township Manager. As a recap, we did do, uh, we've done four interviews now, basic ones, and then we did two follow-ups last week. And the board called, or I called special meeting to discuss those options today. We can, you know, it's pretty much up to us. We can eliminate candidates. We can make a conditional offer. We can have discussion. We can ask questions. I did mail you the suggested and somewhat required motions that Frank sent to us that he needs to have. So I see Ernie's got his hand up. Go ahead, Ernie.
Looking at the four candidates, two of them, we've kind of just didn't really discuss much more after the first one, but the two finals, Wiegand and Marcus, I spent, I don't know how many hours this weekend from Friday, Saturday, and Sunday going through everything and that. It was quite a journey for myself in that, trying to make sure I covered everything, looking back at the first interviews, second interviews, looking at all the questions that were presented, all their answers, how they answered, everything in that. And then I got to the point where I just kind of sat back and tried to visualize everything that's happened in that, and it was interesting to try and come up with a direction to go and that, and it took me up until really last night to come up with a, what I consider a direction that I would like to go in that, and it was many hours of looking at that, not steady, but putting it down, going, doing something, and thinking about something, then come back and re-looking at it, and going through different things, and to come up with something that I felt was reasonable, and a direction that I felt that was best for the township. And for that, I'd like to move to name Thomas Marcusson as Market Township Manager contingent upon a successful background check and contractual negotiations, and to move to retain Ken Overlett investigation to perform a comprehensive background check on Thomas Marcus at a cost not to exceed $800, and move to authorize Lynn Durant and Randy Retary to enter into contractual negotiations effective immediately with Thomas Marcus candidate. Along with that, that to utilize the expertise of Roger Zappa and Frank Marsh during those negotiations and that. Follow that up is, I'd like to have a copy of the employment agreement be shared with the board prior to being presented to Thomas Marcus for review and that.
Hey, Clerk Retary?
I'll second that, but I'd like each motion to be made separately, if that's okay, Ernie?
That's fine. I can do that separately, or?
Yeah, why don't we do that separately? If you want to move the first one, I'll support that first one.
I'll move the first one then. Want me to restate it?
Yes.
I move to name Thomas Marcus as Market Township Manager contingent upon a successful background check and contractual negotiations.
I will support that.
Okay, discussion?
Roll call.
Pete, you had your hand up. Did it pertain to this motion, or?
I was gonna second, but I agree with the motion.
Okay. Anybody else, anything? Okay, roll call, Randy?
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Clerk Retary is yes, trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson? Oh, you're on, oh, you're up?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, a little delay.
It's a rotor.
What am I missing here? Oh, trustee Larue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Ernie, you wanna read your second one, then?
I'll read the second one. I move to retain Ken Overlett investigations to perform a comprehensive background check on Thomas Marcus's at a cost not to exceed $800.
I'll support that also.
Okay.
Roll call.
Discussion? Roll call, Randy?
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Clerk Retary is yes, trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Larue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, Ernie, your third one?
Oh. I move to authorize Lynn Durant and Randy Retary to enter into contractual negotiations effective immediately with Thomas Marcus.
I'll support.
Discussion, questions, Randy?
I just noticed that we have Frank and Roger Zappa also involved with that, and we'll probably use the expertise of our current manager also, so.
Are you making an amendment to the motion then?
I am. I will list all those names on there.
I, as a motion, I'll accept that.
Okay, so the motion will be to authorize the supervisor and the clerk along with Frank Walsh, Roger Zappa, and the current manager to enter into contractual negotiations effective immediately with Thomas Marcus.
I have a question.
Okay, actually, Dave, I think you had your hand up first, didn't you?
No, I did, but I was just gonna add what Randy was added.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Uh, I'm, I have some concern with adding, and everybody that's been mentioned makes sense in the negotiation effort, except I think that, I don't know why our Frank Walsh would be included in that. It seems to me like that if we need his help, the team could ask for it, but I don't think he should be part of the negotiating team. That's, I think it should be limited to board members and the other people that are mentioned, but I don't think we should include Frank Walsh
Conference.
as a member of that team.
Okay, well, he's, I don't know if he cares, or, but he is our consultant. He's the one who, it doesn't matter to me if he's there either, but I don't know, that's kind of the board's pleasure. Or, Ernie, you made the motion.
To me, if you include him or not, I think if you ask, have Lynn and Randy do the primary one, and utilizing Roger and Frank and, and Randy as resources and that.
That was kind of the original motion. Did, did we change then, Randy, the second time?
Not, it did not. They're just resources for us to help.
Okay. First, Dave?
Yeah, what if we just named those three to be available as consultants?
Okay. That's more, that's more acceptable than having them be a member of a designated group.
And I, that's what Ernie wanted and mentioned in the first place, and somehow it got kind of turned around so that they were actually on the committee, and I think just to name them as consultants as needed would be fine with me.
That's, that's a better way to put it.
That's fine with me.
That's fine with me, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Have you got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, so I'll read the motion again. It's to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into contractual negotiations effective immediately with Thomas Marcus with Frank Walsh, Roger Zappa, and Manager Gerard available as consultants if needed.
Fine, great.
And you were the second, right, Randy? So you?
I was, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, just a procedural question. After this whole contract has all worked out, that comes back to the board for review, and then?
It does.
So it doesn't have to be part of the motion, correct?
No, and it does, because you're gonna have to approve the contract before it's, before it's signed anyway, so.
Just wanted to say that and make sure.
That's good. Ernie?
Dave, you beat me to it, because I had it written down here. The employment agreement be shared with the board prior to being presented to Thomas and that.
Well, I knew you had said that, Ernie, and I would just, that was part of your original one, but I didn't think it needed to be part of the motion, because that's the process anyway.
Right.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be looked at by the board and authorized before we sign it. We're just negotiating right now.
Yep, just because seven of us don't need to do this, or can't, or?
Well, gets disjointed if seven people are trying to do it.
Yeah, especially this way.
And Frank would agree, probably. Seven members, probably be disjointed.
Right. I definitely would agree. You know, each community does it differently. Saigon Township just named their manager last week and asked me to be the sole negotiator for someone that I've known for quite a while. I am highly ethical, and I have that role in a number of communities. I think this makes perfect sense. You have two board members in the main role, and I'm in the, and Randy Gerard and your attorney, you probably won't even need me in this process, so I think it makes all the sense in the world. It's all about what you want, not what I want.
So Frank, where, will
Roll call.
expect something tonight, or does, would he want something in writing, or do we wait till we actually present the contract?
All he would want at this point, what's, what is the norm, is just a phone call to him, telling him what the board's action was, and extending the offer to him, and having him say, yeah, I'm verbally in, and then await your copy of your contract offer, what you're going to give him, and some timeline as to when that might happen. I know I've talked to both of them. They're both very excited to get an offer.
Okay, Dan?
Well, I just wanted to say we've got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with what we were doing before we agreed to it. Because especially since Frank was the wild card. Anything else? Okay, Randy, roll call.
Okay, so I'll read the motion once again, so everyone understands. To move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into contractual negotiations effective immediately with Thomas Marcus, and to include Frank Walsh, Roger Zappa, and Randy Gerard, the manager, as consultants if needed.
Okay.
And the roll call vote is Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Clerk Retary is yes, trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Larue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Um, that's all we had on the agenda. I'm thinking processes. We don't have to, Randy, go ahead.
I'm just thinking out loud here, you know, at this point, we, we will not want to eliminate any other candidates, you know, want to keep, hopefully this won't take very long, but as with the previous person, if we can't come to an agreement, we have to have something to fall back on, so don't eliminate anyone else until we have something in writing or, you know, an agreement pending.
Right. We should be able to just use our Tuesday meeting. I don't imagine us having to do anything prior to that for another special meeting. Do you? Does anybody?
I don't think so. I think we could probably within a week get something hammered out and put it on the agenda for Tuesday and go after it there.
Agreed with everybody? Ernie?
In the meantime, will you be notifying Thomas Marcus at all about the meeting today, response?
Is that your job, Frank, or do I do that?
Again, that varies by community. You tell me how you want it, but yeah, Tom would certainly get notified within the hour of the decision, as well as Mr. Regan.
Probably better if you did that, Lynn, as a supervisor.
That's fine. I've got their numbers. Can do that. Okay. Okay, unless somebody has anything to say. Randy?
I have no public comment for the second public comment.
Okay. Any board member come? Go ahead, Randy.
I'd just like to thank Frank Walsh for, you know, giving us four outstanding candidates and having a good problem to have in these times. It's tough to get someone, and I think that, you know, the, there wasn't, there's a little bit separating the top two candidates, but I think they're fairly close in reality, so. And I hope the supervisor would share that with both, you know, that even with the second place, that, you know, you're still a qualified person. It's just that we chose to go a different direction at this time, and as I would tell everyone, don't give up, because someday, sometime or someday, you might have that opportunity again, so.
Okay, Frank?
Yeah, I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to work with you and to serve the community. I've actually really enjoyed getting to know you. Your meetings are actually fun, and I'm not used to that, as a board meeting being fun a whole lot, and I just really enjoy the group, and I wish you well, and if there's anything I can ever do in the future, please let me know. Thank you.
You've made some friends here, Frank, so.
Thank you, Frank.
Hopefully, we can see you for the same reason again, but.
Right.
Okay, yeah, well, this isn't totally done yet. Dan?
I just wanted to add, I guess, that I'm glad that this is getting towards the end. It's, it's been a process, and we've all worked very hard at it, and I think we've got two very good candidates in the end, and one, one exceptional candidate with, with Mr. Marcus, and hopefully we can work out an agreement with him and get him up here in June.
Okay, anybody else? Pete?
I just want to say I'm very happy with the choice. I think it's a good choice, and I hope he accepts it. And it's very interesting. It was, like I say, I watched the interview three times. You know, I still came up with the same answers at the end, so I'm very impressed. I think he will be a good person. And we've got some hard times coming ahead of the township in the next couple of years, and I just I think he's a steady hand for us. So I'm happy with the choice.
Okay, thanks, Ernie.
I think, as we move forward in that, with Thomas talking about the 22nd of June being available, that I'm looking at Randy, how long Randy's gonna be on board and be interested in convincing with us for another month after that or so, and that, so.
Randy, do you want to comment?
Yeah, me and the manager talked about that. That's probably gonna be on the next agenda for an extension of the current manager's contract until we get the current, or the potential candidate in place, so Randy wants to speak to that, I'll let him do that. You're on mute, Randy.
Yeah, I mean, that is an issue. I do, I do have to establish a retirement date with the retirement system, and that has to be not less than 45 days. So what I would request is that, you know, you've been talking about an overlap with, with Tom when he gets here. I'm sure if he moves to Marquette on the 22nd, he may not be absolutely ready to start then. If he, if he does, I would suggest extending the contract until the end of the second week in July, just to, so I have a date that I can give to the retirement system. It'd be the 17th of July.
And like I said, we were gonna, I was gonna put that on the next agenda, so you'll see that Tuesday, and legal counsel's apprised of that.
It is, but if the board could do something before that, because that would not afford me 45 days. I need to be aware of that 45-day notice period.
Before the next meeting?
Yeah, because that would be the 19th, the 19th of May. So it'd be really tight.
Okay, Randy?
I'll ask Roger, can I, is it appropriate to make a motion at this time to extend the manager's contract through July 17?
Technically, since it's a special meeting, you need to make a motion to amend the agenda, because you're, but you do have everybody here, so you can bring in new subject matter as long as you have unanimous support at a special meeting.
Okay, so I will make a motion to add to the agenda, extension of the current manager's contract.
Support.
You want to put a date in?
Well, we gotta still move on that, so that's just to add the agenda.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Dave had his hand up.
No, go ahead with that motion first.
Need a second?
I did. I got John Marks.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so roll call vote is Clerk Retary is yes, trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Larue?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. So now that agenda item is added, and would be after board member comment.
Hey, Ernie?
I think the date that Randy gives is what he's looking at right now. We don't know. It may be a fluid date, too. So we may have to go back in the future and make some adjustments to make sure he gets that 45 days in there, too. But right now, he, he has a date, then we'll go forward on that, but it's, like I say, it's a fluid date. Hopefully that it works out. If not, then we'll have to address it again, to make sure everything comes out the way he needs it and that.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, I have to submit my application for retirement, not less than 45 days. That doesn't, you know, they can readjust after that if it goes longer for some reason, if Tom isn't able to get here or whatever. You can just extend the contract, and they will extend, but I do have to file the application 45 days in advance of an expected date.
And if you're right, Randy, 45, after 45 days, you have a slight window there to start.
Yes.
So if it's a few days longer, it's not gonna be a big deal.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't know, because that was last week, too, when Tom said the 22nd. He may have to shift that, too, but so that.
Some of his issue is gonna be revolved around what the governor does as well.
Randy?
So with the new agenda item, I will make a motion to extend the manager's contract to at least July 17th, 2020.
Support.
Okay, Dan had already had his hand up before you spoke, Randy. How, go ahead, Dan. Dave, sorry, sorry, Dave.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that concerns me, and it'd be interesting hearing from Manager Gerard, is we seem to be way early in the process with Mr. Marcus on this, and I was just wondering if everybody wouldn't be more comfortable if we had an extension to July 31st.
Either way.
It's fine. I'll amend my motion for that.
Support.
Okay. Comments? Okay, go ahead, Randy.
So the motion is to extend the manager's contract through July 31st, 2020, and Clerk Retary is yes, trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Larue?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Question for Roger. Do we just have to put a note at the end of the manager's contract, then, that we did this by board motion, by special meeting, and that should suffice?
That should suffice unless anybody really wants it in writing. Either way is appropriate. When it's a relatively short-term extension like this, you already had an extension by motion only through May 31. You're basically having an additional two months.
Yeah, okay, well, I will attach both of those motions to the current contract then, and we'll go from there.
Okay, Pete?
Randy Gerard, is this gonna give you enough time to get, to get that dark store issue taken care of?
I'll finish that tomorrow.
All right. That, that's.
Hand it off to Tom Marcus.
The timing might be, you know, it's, with everything going on, the timing might be right to push something like that, because the, the resources that we're gonna have, you know, for income and stuff like that's gonna be down, and then why are they gonna, why are they gonna penalize us for trying to do a good job and that, and?
Well, this isn't really part of the agenda, but Assessor Deputy Treasurer Dulce and I will have document for you for your meeting on Tuesday, giving you a picture where we would have been had the dark stories not happened. Just as kind of a thumbnail sketch, the general fund would have an additional $400,000 for 2021.
With every issue, there's always timing. There's a time for this and time for that, and sometimes you gotta do something when the timing is right, so I believe the timing is right now to start pushing it again.
Well, and you do have a meeting coming up with the two legislators that represent this area, and I think when they, when they see the cumulative impact on all of their tax-receiving entities over $59 million since this happened, I think it'll give them some fuel in their fire.
Yeah, I just don't want to give in on it, that's all.
Yeah, I warned Sarah that we would, because I knew Randy and Dulce were putting that together, so I warned her that I would have some numbers for that were pretty staggering.
It's pretty ugly.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I want to thank the board, too, for unanimous vote. I think that's very helpful for a new person coming in, and I appreciate that you have the confidence in him. I think, I think it's gonna be a good thing. I hope, hope we can do this quickly and efficiently to everybody's best interest and get it going. The wheels are in motion. Ernie?
I just hope we get to the pump point in the future that we can meet him in person instead of on a computer all the time and that.
Yeah, let's hope so.
Maybe I can. I have a feeling that he may pay, be paying a visit in the next couple of weeks, just to say hello. I know I would if I was him.
Hard to get the keys through the screen. Okay, any other board member comment? Okay, Randy, if you want to review the motions?
Okay, the first motion of the, of the day or the meeting was to approve the agenda as, as presented. A second motion was to move Thomas Marcus as the Market Township Manager candidate contingent upon a successful background check and contractual negotiations, and that's, that was approved seven zero. The set third motion was to approve Ken Olet investigations to perform a comprehensive background check on Thomas Marcus at a cost not to exceed $800, and that's. at a cost not to exceed $800, and that was approved seven zero. The fourth motion was to approve the supervisor and clerk to enter into contact, contact contractual negotiations with Thomas Marcus immediately with, uh, Frank Walsh, Roger Zappa, and the current manager as resources if needed. And that was approved seven zero. The fifth motion was to add to the special meeting agenda, the extension of the manager's contract, and that was approved seven zero by roll call. I'm just stating, uh, every these, all these motions are approved by roll call vote. And the sixth motion was to extend the current manager's contract through July 31st, 2020, and that was approved seven zero.
Excellent. Okay, I want to remind any, I don't know which, uh, residents might watch this or anybody who does with, because of the circumstances we're under, if you don't feel like you can't call us or email us if you have questions about something, we're always here to help you out or to do whatever we can. That's, that's our job. So this, even though we're kind of limited by these processes, the way we have to do this, it doesn't mean we're not accessible. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that. We just need one more motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
That's it.
Okay, 2:32. Go ahead, Randy.
Clerk Quatari is yes, trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Everson?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries seven zero. Meeting's adjourned at 2:33 PM.
Thanks again, Frank.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.